I'd like to call this meeting to order and welcome you to our school board meeting this evening. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, roll call tonight. All board members are in attendance. We begin our meetings in accordance to policy 203 with a 15-minute time period set aside to receive citizen input through an open forum segment of our agenda. Sign-up sheets are available at least 10 minutes prior to the meeting time at the door. Given some of the open forum sessions we've had over the last few months, the board has felt it important to share a few more words about open forum, and then I'll read the rules. So, the open forum is a safe space for our community members to share their experiences, concerns, and feedback. In this space, we strive to protect First Amendment rights while showing respect for everyone. We would like to ask the community to be respectful not only in speaking at open forum, but also in listening. We, as a community, have an opportunity to elevate the conversation and create healthy spaces for dialogue and opposing views. Demonstrating this for and in our community shows how we can all collectively do better. Thank you respectfully for sharing, listening, and being engaged in our PLSAS community. So, I'll go over the rules, and then we have five speakers this evening. So, input from staff, students, parents, and community members in major decisions can be a valuable form of assistance to the board. Open forum is an opportunity to address the board. At least 10 minutes prior to each meeting, a sign-up sheet will be available at the meeting site for individuals to sign up to address the board. Only those whose names appear on the sign-up sheet at the time the meeting is called to order shall be permitted to address the board. Up to five speakers shall be provided, a maximum of three minutes, so 15 minutes total, to address the board unless an exception is granted by the board chair. Speakers will not be allowed to verbally attack, disparage, or potentially defame individual board members, employees, or students, nor may speakers use vulgar or profane language. Also, speakers may be precluded from disclosing personally identifiable private data regarding employees or students. Speakers unwilling to conform to the rules or time constraints may be told that his or her privilege of speaking has ended. If you have any handouts or materials for the board, please submit those items to the executive assistant, Martha Walts. Members of the public should not approach the dais. The board will not review handouts during the public comment period. Board members shall listen respectfully to issues brought to them by the community, but not engage the individuals during their time. The board shall not deliberate or take action during the open forum regarding an issue presented. If follow-up by administration is necessary, the chair shall request that the superintendent follow up on the matter. When the board chair proceeds with the meeting, audience comments are no longer in order. However, the board members retain the right to call on district administrators for information to assist the board in its deliberations. Thank you. Tonight, we have five speakers, and the first is Natalie Barnes, and her topic is SROs training.
Board members and community, thank you for having me here. So, I am just speaking to the SROs in training, and I did speak at the last Prior Lake City Council meeting as well. I am by character a person of action, and if there's a problem, let's fix it. After communications with both Chief Dugan, obviously Dr. Thomas, Prior Lake City Council, the board, and also Chair Crosby, it came to my attention that our local stakeholders have really worked together for a plan that best suits us in this day and age where SROs are in a very difficult spot. According to our state statutes, they are not able to complete their tasks as they should in the schools as they had agreed upon with their current contract or previous contract. I appreciate our local government response, but what is the action for the Prior Lake School Board? Is the board going to vote to support our local law enforcement incentive, request for our executive branch and legislators to revise the statute? The local police departments, city councils, mayors, and school boards need to have a unified board. Per the city planner, Prior Lake has joined the League of Cities and still requesting a special session. The governor's response has not been adequate for our local police departments. Chief Dugan shared that although the prone holds have not been used even once in our school district in the past three years, the last few years have seen a triple number increase in fights since 2017. In 2017, 18, 26 fights; 2018, 19, 48 fights; 2019, 20, 48 fights; and 21, 22, 74 fights in our district. So, what is the school district plan for training? This will affect both our general education and special education students, and I do want to share something from a mother, from a local special ed mom. She said that she had a son that was in 7th grade in a special ed resource room and got the worst call of her life. She was told that her son was there, and he was hitting his head against a locker, and the ambulance and police were with him. When she entered the room, she was horrified to see that her small 13-year-old son was prone and handcuffed, and she knelt down next to him, made eye contact, and in a calm voice told him that if he would be calm, that he would be able to be, and still the handcuffs would come off. And the handcuffs did come off, and he immediately was held tightly by his mom. Now, as an educator myself, adult education, and I know that this mom actually became an education assistant, she had de-escalation training that she received, like 180 hours. And she worked in special ed IEP areas that had large amounts of, obviously, kids that could have been restrained in different ways, but they only had to do it one to two times per year. So, with our lack of SROs in our district, what is our plan then for training? Training our teachers, our paraprofessionals, and everyone else that is in contact, if this includes our parents, what is our solution? Because that training is going to be imperative so that we don't have to use these holds or call in our local police officers. And I have to say, and just in closing, that this happened about eight years ago, and again, it has not had a prone hold in our district in the last three years. So, again, we need our SROs in our district to be able to prevent some situations like this from happening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Katie Gabriel, speaking on unity around our shared goals.
Good evening, Chair Crosby, Dr. Thomas, and board directors. My name is Katie Gabriel. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Savage, and I have two students in the district. Audrey Lord wrote, "It is not our differences that divide us; it is our inability to recognize, accept, and celebrate those differences." At the last study session, you discussed division within our community, and that division is clearly not serving our students. The good news is that we have a shared goal that can unite us. That is, all of us working to ensure that all of our students, not just those who fit the gender binary, have white skin, or share the same religious and/or ideological beliefs as we do, are safe, welcomed, valued, and have a sense of belonging in our district exactly as they are. As a result, we help all of our students to thrive, both inside and outside of the classroom. So, what does it look like when we're successful? It looks like our board and community supporting our educators and staff as they teach about people with historically underrepresented identities. This learning is a foundation for increasing everyone's ability to recognize, accept, and celebrate our differences, especially those of our students. And it's a building block in helping us to create an environment where students with these identities feel seen, safe, and welcomed in our schools. It looks like collections of books that all of our students see themselves reflected in, that provide opportunities to explore new ideas, and that challenge some of their closely-held beliefs. It looks like trust in our school library and media center staff to build these collections that make all of this possible, and trust that parents and guardians are setting expectations at home regarding what materials their students engage with. It looks like BIPOC students in our district walking through the school halls and learning in classrooms where they see teachers, staff, and administrators who look like them. It looks like trusting our students to know what names and pronouns make them feel 100% themselves. And it looks like the adults in our community thinking honestly and critically about whether or not our closely-held beliefs may be interfering with our ability to achieve our ability to accomplish this shared goal, interfering with our ability to help all of our students thrive. And if the answer is yes, they are interfering, then doing the work to evolve our beliefs. We are capable of change. Human beings are capable of changing their beliefs. If we weren't, we, all of you sitting at that table, or most of you sitting at that table, would not have the right to vote today, let alone have a seat at the table. We can be united. Our students deserve it, and their futures depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker tonight is Michael Gills, or Gillis, speaking on gratitude and board norms and ethics policy.
Good evening, Board Chair Crosby, Dr. Thomas, board members, and my fellow community members. My name is Michael Gillis. I'm a parent of two students here in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, as well as being a community member, a taxpayer, and a voter. Also, I thought I was an accomplished public speaker, but I haven't been this nervous since the last time I sat in a dentist's chair. I'm here tonight to express two things. First, my gratitude, and second, my concerns. I'll do my best to be brief. First, gratitude. I cannot speak from direct experience, but it is safe to presume that being a school board member or a school superintendent is not always a comfortable state of being, be it the sacrifices of your time, or rather, beyond the sacrifices of your time. You sacrifice the comfort of anonymity for a life, however short your terms may be, in the scrutiny of the public eye. And regardless of whether I agree with your personal viewpoints or the decisions that you make and the roles you occupy, I acknowledge your work, and I am grateful for it. Now, it's come to my concern, which involves the board's operating norms and its code of ethics, two policies which are on tonight's agenda. Both of these policies provide clear and specific language regarding how board members fulfill their roles with respect to each other, school district employees, community members, and, most importantly, PLSAS students, all students. In fact, the district's own mission statement states, "Our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community." All learners. Recently, in our very own community, while the benefits of public education to a healthy democracy should be a foregone conclusion, the United States has a long history of internal opposition to this very pillar of our society. I do not have the time to go into that here. I would love to at some future date. A recent manifestation of this opposition can be seen in an organization calling itself Moms for Liberty, which although based in Florida, has chapters nationwide, including here in Minnesota. Just recently, this organization has been identified as an extremist group by a renowned expert on extremist groups and hate groups in the United States. An extremist group, by its very nature, cannot have the best interests of all learners at heart. Some learners, certainly, but all learners, it is just not possible. The learners in our district deserve the opportunity to reach their full potential, and allowing extremist groups a seat at the table inhibits that potential. The policies you are reviewing and approving tonight provide clear guidance on how to interact with each other and the community to promote the best interests of all learners. I respectfully urge you, Board Chair Crosby, Dr. Thomas, and board members, to interact with extremist groups such as Moms for Liberty with extreme caution. I conclude where I began tonight, with gratitude. Your responsibilities are not easy to fulfill. Thank you for taking them on, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next this evening, excuse me, next this evening, we have Rachel Carlson, speaking on the topic
Good evening. On August 14th, I stood at this podium and asked that a parental rights and transparency resolution be added to a study session for discussion. Nine days later, I received an email from Chair Crosby that read, "Rachel, thank you for speaking at the most recent public forum. Your ask regarding a parental rights and transparency resolution was heard by the board. You also requested a response to this ask, and as the chair, I am replying on behalf of the board. As we look to update our district strategic plan, direction from our community of diverse stakeholders will shape and ultimately achieve our plan. Should a request of this nature arise from a collective community voice through this work, it could come forward to the board for discussion. We appreciate your time and commitment to PLSAS. Thank you. Amy." That same day, I responded asking for clarity on how one proves that there is a large portion of our community behind this resolution. How large does this voice need to be to be considered? I have yet to receive the clarity and guidance that I requested. At the August 28th board meeting, a motion to add this resolution to the agenda was made by Director Bullion and supported by Director Atkinson. I would like to take a moment to thank both of you for supporting this request. The lack of support from the remaining board members was disappointing, to say the least. After reviewing meeting minutes from the Public Engagement and Legislative Committee regarding the process that the equity resolution followed, it appears that the collective community voice that was required in 2021 was three board directors, one superintendent, and 10 select community members. Tonight, I'm here, speaking on behalf of over 450 collective community voices. Over 450 people have read and support the parental rights and transparency resolution and have signed a petition to support its implementation in our district. I would like to request that Dr. Thomas meet with me and several of the community members named on this petition to discuss the importance behind its consideration. I believe and agree with you, Dr. Thomas, when you say that you value partnership with parents, and that we are our students' first and foremost teachers, and that you want us at the table to help prepare our students for their future. Please consider being the first Minnesota independent school district to commit to protecting parental rights by adopting a parental rights and transparency resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker tonight is Charles Johnson, on school resource officers and parents' rights.
Ladies and gentlemen, the board, and Superintendent Thomas, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I am an active-duty military member, and I have two children enrolled in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Today, 22 years after the deadliest attack on America, we're here discussing the removal of school resource officers from our schools. The city council voted to end the contract. School resource officers are not only in our schools to stop fights and to rein in disorderly conduct; they're there to mentor, guide, be relationship builders, and they're trained to help escalate and de-escalate and resolve situations. The presence of school resource officers is a deterrent to violence, bullying, and misbehavior. When a parent sends their child to school, they expect them to be safe. Fights and disorderly conduct are three times higher. Now, it is not time to remove our school resource officers; it's a time to increase them. Without school resource officers, the question becomes, how do you plan on maintaining the level of safety that we, the parents, demand without school resource officers in our schools? Look at the September 8th fight at Mankato East. The school had to go into lockdown. This incident alone illustrates the value and the need for our school resource officers. Who do you expect to resolve these issues, the teachers or the staff? I have a solution. It's simple. Bring safety, transparency, and increased parental involvement. Bring in the parents. The law states, "An employer, agent of the district." Parents are not employees or agents of the district. Parents would have a direct avenue into the curriculum, a firsthand view of the safety of their children, and would promote accountability, transparency, and build trust. I'll be the first to volunteer. I'd be glad to start a sign-up, genius. Beginning this school year with the issue of removing school resource officers, lack of transparency because of legal issues on allowing parents' rights, and last year's MCA results prove that what has been happening in our schools is not working. The community has raised concerns with parents' rights, the curriculum, financial transparency, and now the removal of school resource officers. These are real concerns that can easily be solved by welcoming parents back into our buildings so that teachers and students can focus in a safe learning environment. There should be nothing to hide. A decision must be made tonight, because every day without a school resource officer is a day of unnecessary risk. We cannot wait for a special session to be called. We can't let politics determine what is best for our kids and our teachers. Let's work together and get this done. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
Director Burnick and Director Olstead, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, that passes 7-0. Our first agenda item tonight, having our guests here, we moved it up to the top, is around the school resource officer agreements and the MOUs that we are here to have been, excuse me, have been requested to approve tonight for the city of Prior Lake and the city of Savage. Dr. Thomas, I'll hand it off to you.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, board of directors. Tonight, we are going to have a discussion with you all to address the challenges that are before us, that have been so lovingly placed on our plates by our legislators. Just to give some context to the board and to our community, who might not be dialed into all the different details, because this obviously has been hitting the media, and different soundbites might not be telling the whole story, so I will do my best to convey all of the details for our community locally here and what that means for us. So, in this past legislative session, language was buried in a larger omnibus bill that restricted the ability of an SRO to do the job of a regular police officer who are highly trained and qualified to take various actions based upon the situations and scenarios as they present. And in this language, as it's being interpreted through various legal councils, the SROs effectively become agents of the district, and as an agent of the district, SROs would no longer be able to utilize their full set of skills when they deemed necessary based upon individual situations or context. Yet, their colleagues from the same precinct, for example, could be called onto the scene and fully execute their abilities as officers with no restrictions. And essentially, created two classes of officers that would be able to take on certain duties, and that was not something that our local agencies, Prior Lake and Savage Law Enforcement, were comfortable with, nor being legally advised to subject their officers to potential liability concerns where decisions that might be made in the moment may come back and prove to be harmful to that officer for making such decisions. There's a lot of conversation around the state about various cities and making different decisions, and that's because every city, based upon their unique legal councils, is getting advice at the local level. So, this is not a one-size-fits-all determination. So, people are asking me, why does this city still have a contract and this one doesn't? Why are you pursuing this and others aren't? So, I just want to be clear that it's at the local level that those decisions and conversations are being had to best understand how to move forward based upon the mutual parties' interests. And I will also be very clear that this is not something that we, nor Prior Lake and Savage Police Departments, have put on our own plates. This is very clearly the result of a legislative decision that was made, and now we are trying to figure out how to move past some of the language that is very restricting based upon some of the decisions that we feel that might need to be made in a school. As you've heard this evening, and I would say beyond the past three years, it has not been our experience or history to have students in prone holds. We have very extensive preventative training with CPI training, positive behavior intervention supports training with our staff. We have highly specialized curriculum that meets some of the regulatory needs of our kids who might have some of those challenges that may become dysregulated. So, SROs are not a one-stop solution. They're part of a larger safety plan that we have for all of our campuses. But clearly, our relationship that probably dates back over 30 years has proven to be highly beneficial, and one that is not just there to respond to situations. They are actually there building a lot of positive proactive relationships with our students and with our staff, whether it's, you know, going into our cafeteria, speaking in classrooms, greeting families as they're dropping off students, at our football games, et cetera. They're there building relationships because they are in serving the community, and our schools are the community. It's a subset of our community. So, we have actually had a lot of value-add for that relationship. And through a lot of collaborative discussion with the folks that you see here in our front row, our police chiefs, mayors, city managers, and our executive staff here at the district, we have been working through the language in the law, really striving for ways that we could find language that would suffice to keep the traditional relationship intact without having to feel as though we're doing these political workarounds to essentially carry out the same functions. And that's proven to be somewhat challenging. I'll speak for myself, but I think my colleagues could say the same. It's been extremely frustrating to have to deal with this pile of lemons and try to make it as sweet as possible. And we've reached a point where, for our ability locally here, for our law enforcement to continue their presence, and I want to be very clear here, they will continue their presence in supporting our schools, both during the school day as well as at a variety of activities and events. For their liability sake, it was determined that canceling the SRO contract would release officers from effectively becoming agents of our district. And that's the operative word here, because, as you recall, any other officer could get called to a situation and respond as they deemed fit, because they were not agents of the district. And that is actually the biggest challenge. There's been various opinions offered since the law passed. Those opinions have not given the level of clarity and reduced the level of questionable liability to the point where our law enforcement agencies were ready to move forward in the current relationship under the current contract. So, therefore, we are recommending to you, the board here, that you also make a vote to end the contract with Prior Lake Savage Area Police and Savage Area Police with the caveat to understand that waiving, or canceling this contract, what that means is that our officers locally will no longer be agents of our district and will still be able to enjoy the partnership that we've had for over 30 years, and still be able to make critical decisions, lifesaving decisions in some instances, that would be necessary based upon individual situations and contexts. And I'll just bring out a point, sorry, let me just pull up something here. This is language in our contract currently around severability, and it states, "If any part of this agreement is rendered void, invalid, or unenforceable, such rendering shall not affect the enforceability and validity of the remainder of this agreement unless the part or parts which are void, invalid, or otherwise unenforceable shall substantially impair the value of the entire agreement with respect to any party." Generally speaking, the notion here of enforceability, the legislative language essentially nullifies this contract, because it puts restrictions on those officers that we have a contract with to do their job to the fullest extent. And because of that, this is also why we're asking the board to cancel this agreement in addition to waiving the in addition to waiving the 180-day waiting period so that tomorrow morning, should something happen at one of our campuses that a critical decision needs to be made right there in the moment, law enforcement would be able and ready to respond. The last piece I would share with you is that this contract is currently supported through our safety levy. And by canceling this contract, the dollars that are associated with this contract are also now going to be picked up by our local law enforcement agencies respectively. And the caveat language from our council on this matter is whether or not a special session would be called. Communities probably heard a lot of conversation about that as well, and I'll just briefly share some context to that. The Governor's Office reached out to me last week to ready, to be ready to come in as a representative, a superintendent representative, to have conversations about a special session. That meeting never occurred, and I just want to be very clear, I stand ready for the Governor or any other legislator who would like to have conversations regarding our specific situation to bring our story forward and share the value add that we have found through our 30-plus-year partnership. Just today, I also had a reach out from Congresswoman Craig's office around this matter, and I stand ready and willing to have conversations with our Congress as well. This is something that is really important. I think we heard from our parents in our community, and you all have heard it from my mouth as well, when parents send kids to school, they better be safe, bottom line. And compromising safety is not something that we are willing to do. And so irrespective of the legislative language, I want to assure our community and assure this board, safety is something that's a non-negotiable for us. And yes, our law enforcement plays a part in the larger ecosystem of public safety and that being in our schools, in addition to the extensive training that many of our staff continue and will be going through on a regular and annual basis in our district as well. So with that, Chair Crosby, I think I've given enough context and am available for questions, as well as any of our mutual colleagues here from the city that might be able to clarify as well.
Okay, before we move forward, we'll start with the memo of understanding joint powers agreement with the city of Prior Lake, because we'll do them individually. And can I get a motion to approve?
Still made.
By Director France in a second. By Director Alstead. Okay, I'll open it up for discussion and questions, and we do have resources available as guests this evening, too.
I have one point of clarification. So Dr. Thomas, I appreciate the background and the context. You mentioned cancellation. The memorandums of understanding each date, this would be a suspension of the contracts, provided that we're able to come to some sort of agreement, either depending on if, well, Prior Lake we're talking about right now, June 4th, if we're able to come to some sort of an agreement or maybe a special session proves that there is a different direction, at which point the contract would essentially be nullified.
Yes, so I guess language does matter, and thank you for that. So actually, when I was talking about the special session, that is actually the piece that I omitted to kind of button up. So with regards to our general counsel, they wrote language here around suspension of the contract because the possibility of any type of special session that could be called and/or if the legislature goes back into regular session and any changes, to not have to go through the whole ramification of rebuilding a contract, we could reinstate the existing contract. And I can get clarity if that, Emily, is there any other context around that particular term? I know our respective cities have used the term cancellation, and our council has used this term. Anything that you could add context-wise?
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. It is an official suspension of the contract in order for if the, under item five, if there were to be any modification of the statute that would allow us to continue, then we can move forward with compliance within seven days, calendar days, of that modification to the statute. So we have been utilizing the term of a suspension, not a termination of the contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, the number six says, on or before June 5th, 2024, it'll automatically terminate?
With this one here, it runs the course of the actual contract currently. So it's set to already expire. So if nothing comes of that, then it naturally comes to an end.
We'd have to go back. Do it anyway. Okay. A question I had about, if I may, questions. I know in, there will be an officer around our middle schools, our high school, Bridges. I wondered about the elementaries. Does this open up anything for him or her to, for lack of a better word, tour the elementaries over the course of the day? Are they, I know they're not currently in our contract, but I didn't know if that actually opened it up for them to go to elementaries.
I certainly don't want to speak for the agencies, but I'll let any of you respond after I share this. But currently, right now, an officer can come into any one of our campuses and check in with the administration, check in, how was the day going? If an officer would like to use an office in our room or in our schools to do paperwork, make phone calls, that would be made available as well. So quite honestly, I think the potential to open up that support at the elementary would increase. Not that they couldn't do that now, but because they're not assigned necessarily, that would open up some flexibility based upon, you know, their human resource bandwidth as well.
Right. I only say that because elementaries aren't mentioned in either of these memos. I know we're only talking about Prior Lake right now, but...
And the memos only speak to the specific SRO assigned, and we're speaking much broader support with, within, by expanding that relationship. So it's not just relegated to an SRO. It's the partnership now that we'll have with the entire agency and any officer that may be on beat. Or we, I know some are working on regular scheduled patrols and having an officer that would be the point investigation officer, for example, at our high school, would be continuity in that individual pending something that might be happening and they're not available. But those are some of the nuances that I know that the agencies will be respectively working through as they look at the assignments of patrols for our schools.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Dr. Thomas, do you know if all of our staff have received CPI training, which is training that they use to de-escalate a situation?
Dr. Edwards, you want to explain which staff are identified to be targeted for training?
Yes. Currently, that training is for our staff who support our center-based programs specifically. And we also have expanded that opportunity to include other special education staff and other support staff within the building that support, for example, social workers who often support the students within those programs, so aligned with the requirements statutorily with regard to training and the updating of that training and maintaining of that training on an annual basis.
Now, one of the things that I would add to that, Director Atkinson, is that given some of the flexibility that we would now have within our safety and security levy, that may be an option for us to be able to expand beyond special ed staff to broaden that umbrella of folks who would receive some of that training. Again, when we talk about some of the specialized holds, et cetera, it has primarily come from students with some physical or emotional dysregulation more times than not than general ed. And so again, that's where we focused our resources for the type of training, but certainly this would give us some flexibility now to look at some other alternatives to expand some of that.
Yeah, and that's great. So what percentage of our staff do you believe that makes up? Approximately.
We'd have to get back to you on, oh, on...
Yeah, I would need to...
How many staff? Oh, Emily.
I would need to get back to you on that unless, because we do see Director Chuka is in the audience here.
I don't have the number, but I certainly can report back.
Yep. We can definitely look into that. I also want to add that that expands to our paraeducators as well, not just our certified staff. And another wonderful opportunity we had this, over the summer, is Director Chuka and some members of her team, based on feedback we received from our paraeducator group, created a really wonderful training for all of our staff to go through promoting positive interactions with students. Now, while it's not necessarily dealing with the holds that CPI would go into, it really deals with the interactions that they have with students in different settings throughout the building. And it's a wonderful opportunity to expand our training and that availability throughout and utilizing really great members of Director Chuka's team to create that internal resource that will be pushing out to all of our staff. So looking at multiple different trainings to provide that whole picture that Dr. Thomas was talking about of security with all of our students.
Does it make sense to, maybe even for the people in the community in the room and tuning in online, does it make sense to, what is a prone restraint? And I know we have our folks here from the city and from the police departments, what is a prone restraint? And was, was this, this seems like this was one piece and kind of the only reason that this piece of this legislation occurred or was passed. And I'd be curious if there was any more to that beyond just the prone restraint. And I think maybe it, people hear that, it's a big, it's a big word, it's a big term. What does that mean? Certainly in the last couple of years, we're a little bit more familiar with it maybe than we'd like to be. But what is that? And just to educate us, and was there more? And I don't want to put anybody on the spot with the legislation and things, but was there more to this? Or was that really the only piece that brought this whole thing to light?
Director Alstead, I'll say that that was probably one of the larger challenges to try to overcome in terms of a specific action. And a prone restraint is where, you know, a forearm or a knee, depending on if they're standing vertical or on the ground, would be used to apply, you know, safe pressure to hold, to potentially handcuff an individual that might be physically aggressive to not hurt themselves or other people. And the question was, should that be used by school resource officers? And the answer, by way of legislation, is no. It should never be used in schools. Now, aside from the prevention of bodily harm to themselves or others or potential death or something like that. And I think the challenge in where things get really gray is in the milliseconds within a situation, how do we go back and forth on gray language of what was potentially going to be bodily harm to themselves or to others? I think a scenario that has been used in several conversations that I've been a part of is if we have a student that is emotionally dysregulated and decides to go into a computer lab and begins to smash computers, throwing monitors or taking a laptop and throwing it like a frisbee, would that not potentially harm someone? Would they potentially not harm themselves by having glass shards fire back onto their face or, you know, into their eyes, et cetera? So should I or shouldn't I use a physical hold to restrain them? Because it's not like the student has a gun or wielding a knife or anything like that. It's a computer monitor, just destroying property. Do I sit back and let that happen until they are de-escalated? Or do I move into that situation? I think that's the type of ambiguity that agencies are not comfortable operating within, that in a moment's notice, a decision needs to be made. And what we've seen across the country, unfortunately, is situations that can go from zero to 100 in a matter of seconds. And if individuals cannot utilize the full training and tools at their disposal, seconds will cost hundreds of lives potentially. And I think that's the concern, if I'm speaking on behalf of our colleagues with respect to Prior Lake and Savage Area Law Enforcement, that's at the crux of the decisions that we're coming to in our local communities. Hope that helps. Answer that.
Thank you.
Other board members have questions or discussion points?
I have a question. Thank you, city leaders, for coming. I'm wondering if any of them were prepared or queued to speak to, as to this tonight? And I, again, I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot.
We certainly, we're on Prior Lake right now. We certainly can open up for, for you to enter the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
For the director and the board members and Dr. Thomas and to our community members, I appreciate that opportunity. Dr. Thomas, excellent. Your application will be in your mailbox very shortly as we're hiring right now, so thank you. I'll, directly to your point, rather than lament on what I'll call the negligent legislation that, again, has put all of us in this position here and speaking to our parents and community members and educators as well who aren't here, it's most important to me that everyone understands that not only is the safety and peace of mind of our educators, our staff, our parents, and our students absolutely paramount, we want everyone to understand that in no way does this cancellation, the words for the city language, suspension for the language that's in front of you, change at all our focus on absolutely providing that level of safety, security, and peace of mind already. And what I'm calling an interim or the gap for this timeline until, I don't like hope or luck as strategies, but I hope the legislature fixes this quickly. In this gap or interim period of time for Prior Lake, and I'd let Chief Sawyer speak for Savage, but I believe it's the same, we've already got a heightened presence not only at the elementary but at the middle schools, at Bridges. We've got officers on the daily walking through the schools so that in an event, if we were able to prevent or respond to, or simply for that peace of mind, all of us know that your police department is still here for you. That will continue without question. Should this become fixed, an easy term, very quickly here, we are within 24 to 48 hours in a position to assign an SRO and get that person into the schools and then continue that same level of response. So I think that's really the biggest thing that I want parents, and I certainly appreciate the passion of our parents here, although my kiddo is much older, she was in the school district for a period of time. That's very close to my heart. It's very important for our staff, for our officers. They know this feeling of uneasiness that this event has created for all of us, and so we are going to continue to address that, to be very present for all of those reasons. And I want to offer, too, one secondary note. Not only are the SROs critically important for that safety and security piece, but as was mentioned, I believe, by our parent, really what I have seen in 26, nearly 27 years of law enforcement in multiple school districts, the true value of SROs is a consistent face for mentorship, for developing relationships. And I have literally seen lives saved by the relationships that consistent presence of law enforcement in our schools has developed. We want those critical lifelong relationships to be developed so that relations between community and police continue to increase, continue to get better. So it isn't just we're there when there might be a problem. We're there before problems ever start so that they never do. And it's really critical that I think everyone understands that that's really the big press for what SROs and consistent police presence does, is develop that critical lifelong relationship. So hear me very clearly, for Prior Lake, and I would believe Savage, too, in no way are we leaving our kiddos and our educators out to dry in any way. We are there already. We will continue to be there, and as soon as this gets fixed, again, my word, we will move right back into that relationship. So that's really critical and important that everyone hears that, and I would be happy to answer any questions, but the doc has already answered them very well, so I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Malley. Other feedback or questions from board members?
I do have one more question. Just, so, just to share for the board and for, I think, for the community as well. First of all, thank you for all the work that was done, the relationship between the city... city and the district and the collaboration, keeping the student's safety first is very evident, and we're thankful for that. What does, so, we are, we're brought with this task of voting tonight as a board, but the decision to, to stop the contract as is and to add the memorandum of understanding has already been made. Can you help the board and the community understand what a no vote tonight? What would that mean?
So, let me just pick up a couple of sentences before your question. The vote has already been made. And so, let me just clarify some context around that. And I'm really saying this respectfully, and I shared it earlier, the legislative language nullified this contract.
Yes.
Okay? Based upon the severability clause. This is nothing that this board initiated. It's nothing that our respectful agencies have initiated. This was initiated and essentially sealed when that omnibus bill passed. It essentially nullified the contract. So, in all intents purposes, you're going through the motions of taking a vote on something that has already sailed. Ship has already sailed on this one. So, what happens if the board says, no, we don't want to suspend the contract or cancel the contract? I would say that we would be putting our law enforcement partners in a predicament where they would have to make some critical choices as to their presence on our campuses. Because there's a level of liability that their respective councils are just not comfortable with at this time. And for that matter, they may have to make some different decisions. Certainly can't say that they will or wouldn't, but I'm just saying that would be the reality, that we would in turn be passing this really poor plate of lemons to a partner who has nothing but wanting to collaborate and make something work for us. And that wouldn't be fair. So, that's the best way I can answer that, Director Bullion.
Thank you for that clarification. I think it's important to, yeah, I just appreciate the clarification because I think the whole thought of having the SRO removed, especially from community members, even, you know, other leaders that don't understand, it's scary. And so, that, you know, what a no vote would mean, wouldn't actually, someone might think that it was trying to keep the SROs, but it actually would in turn be hurting. And so, just having that clarification, I know I wanted it. I had questions asked to me regarding it, so thank you for that.
Yeah, I think that's a great distinction you just made. Voting yes to suspend the contract keeps the relationship in healthy tact. Voting no to suspend this contract jeopardizes that relationship even further.
Thank you.
I was just gonna make that clarification myself, so thank you, Director Bullion, that some of the comments that I've received in the community is we're not going to have officers on our campus if we nullify this contract or agree to suspend it. And that obviously isn't the case. But I did want to also point out that I appreciate the fact that Minnesota has local control and we've, we have the ability to do this, maintain the relationship and also basically free up the officers to act in the capacity that they've been trained most to do, that I think is going to actually benefit our students more than even our previous agreement did. And that's just my opinion. I don't know if that's a correct assessment of what I understood for some of the limitations when we call them school resource officers besides just having officers, you know, on our campus and actually treating our campuses as was stated earlier by the officer, to actually include the elementary schools and things like that into a high patrol area. I think that's very valuable. I think it's going to benefit the district more in the long run. And I believe that the folly at the legislature is actually a good learning experience and is actually going to do us better overall in the long run, just from the experience we've had in the suspension of, suspension of the contract as well as understanding the role of officers on campus and the importance of that, and the importance of freeing them up to be able to do their jobs appropriately.
Chair Crosby? I have perhaps a different perspective I'd like to share. As a parent of a high school student, my heart has been super heavy since I learned about the possibility of ending our contract with our SROs. I watched the city, the Savage City Council meeting, and I attended the Prior Lake City Council meeting, and I understand and appreciate the hours of meetings and our partnership that have been built discussing the changes to the law and the vulnerable position that puts our police officers in our city in. I appreciate our city leaders' plea to the governor to call a special session, but honestly, I have little hope that a special session will be called and that this law will be changed. This issue was brought to the governor in mid-August and no action has been taken. Now, 44 Minnesota DFL representatives, including two of our local Savage D-55 representatives, have released a statement opposing a special session to review this law. I have also been following other city decisions, including Lakeville, Jordan, Shakopee, Farmington, and my understanding is that these cities have not canceled their SRO contracts and will continue their partnerships. Now, I understand every school district is unique, as stated, which impacts this decision. Knowing that the reported number of fights has almost tripled in our district since 2018, and there has not been any use of prone restraints by an SRO in our district in the past five, our past three years, I have seen videos of fights on social media from both our middle school and our high school, and I have a hard time believing any teacher or admin would just stand back and not feel compelled to break up a fight. But under this new law and the ambiguous language, it puts our teachers and our admin in a very conflicting, potentially dangerous and legally liable situation. So, with this new law in place and our city is requesting to end our SRO contract, one of the questions I had, you answered already, was about the CPAI training. I'd also like to know what other changes, particularly to our middle school and high school, would be put in place to create a safe and supportive environment for our students? And I'll let you answer that in a second as soon as I finish. As a school board director, part of my role and my moral obligation is to ensure a safe learning environment. While I agree with the concerns raised by both our city and our police department and the significant problems this legislation creates for both our district and the SROs, I still feel strongly that having SROs in our building remain critical to our district's safety. As a board member, it's my role to make the best decisions for students and staff. While both cities have already voted to cancel the contract, tonight you're requesting us to release the cities from their 180-day advance notice. I'm having a hard time accepting this request, knowing what happened in Mankato last week. I also know that many parents will send their students to school tomorrow with the question of what if? Is my student safe? Do our teachers have the right training to protect our children? Does the district have the right plan in place to protect our teachers and students? I feel confident that our district and our city leaders and our police department would have enough time in the next 180 days to formulate a safe plan, train our staff and communicate to our community that we have a thoughtful plan in place to ensure students and teachers are safe. My suggestion is to take the next 180 days to develop a plan that supports creating a safe learning environment and puts our parents' hearts and minds at ease as they send their precious babies to our school district tomorrow morning. So, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not in support of releasing them from the 180-day agreement. And those are the reasons why.
Thank you. I'll just weigh in. Watching Dr. Thomas and our wonderful city leadership and police force leadership collaborate since August has been very humbling for me, knowing the strong relationship you all have built and the work you've done to create a plan to be able to work within this situation that we've been dealt, given the decision made by the legislature. And I'm thankful, thankful that we were ahead of it. We were proactive. We partnered long ago on this and that our relationship was very solid so that we can move forward and provide that same safe experience for our kids regardless of what's going on behind the scenes, because that's what parents care about, right? That's what I care about as a parent, right? Is that the child at the school has the same safe experience regardless of what the paperwork says. And so, we found a way to do that, in my opinion. And I've been reassured by that with Dr. Thomas and with the chiefs and mayor, so I appreciate that. The other thing that was brought up tonight was proper training, and I really appreciate that perspective too. So, I just want to reiterate that because I think there's maybe a little lemonade here with extra resources that we can put forward to our staff in proper training. And I appreciate that we'll still have officers available on our campuses to do what they are trained to do without any hesitation or half second holding back. And lastly, in terms of advocacy, I know Dr. Thomas has worked and been very available to our state representatives and state, you know, it would have been great to have the opportunity to speak with Governor Walz this week. That didn't come to fruition, but should he need the support of our board to also advocate, we are here and would be available if that call were to come. So, I think we're ready for a vote on the Prior Lake MOU. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That passes 6-1. We will, can I get a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding, the joint powers agreement with the city of Savage?
So made.
By Director Burnick, and a second?
Okay.
By Director Velazquez. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That passes 6-1. Thank you for your time tonight, joining us and willingness to spend your beautiful evening with us. We will move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed as a consent agenda item and addressed. Are there any items that board members would like removed this evening?
Chair Crosby, on the purchase orders exceeding 25,000, I have one item that I've had requested to pull off of the consent agenda, so I don't know if we need to pull the full purchase order exceeding 25,000 off of consent agenda?
I believe it would just be the one item. No, the entire.
The entire thing.
Okay, thank you. So, that would be 8B. And we will move that to the beginning of new business.
Thank you.
So, can I get a motion, or is everyone, any others? Am I missing anything? Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda without item 8B, please?
So made.
Director Velazquez, a second?
Second.
By Director France. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 7-0. We have the resolution for acceptance of gifts. I believe that's the next. Okay, thank you. And so, tonight, sorry, everybody, I have a new paper copy. Tonight, we are honored to, well, first, can I get a motion made to accept?
So made.
By Director Olsted, and second, by Director Atkinson. Okay, so, tonight, the gifts received by the district are, which we will honor in Laker Pride, are SMSC, the $21,375 for 15 AEDs for the district, Jim Grover gift cards for Bridges students, district office staff in kind for school supplies, also families in the district, DIFRIL Development and City of Prior Lake Night to Unite participants in kind for school supplies, Jody Johnson in kind for hospital bed walkers, wheelchair and miscellaneous items for men caps, the Fountains Assisted Living in Kind, which is three hospital beds, wheelchair and higher left for men caps, Five Hox Dogs, $1,200 for a bike rack, Five Hox PTC, $9,500, playground backboards and first grade tables, Jeffers Environmental Stewardship Fund, $5,500 for teacher stipends to attend outdoor learning co-op program. Thank you all for the generosity. All in favor of acceptance of gifts?
Aye.
Sorry, roll call vote. Director Atkinson. Director Velazquez.
Aye.
Director France.
Aye.
Director Burnick.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
And Director Olsted.
Aye.
Thank you. So, we will move on to Laker Pride.
I am excited to recognize the Shakopee-Middletowkatin-Sue community during Laker Pride tonight. I reached out to the community with a big ask earlier this year. Prior Lake Savage area schools had 15 AEDs in which we could not, no longer order replacement parts for or batteries. The Shakopee-Middletowkatin-Sue community graciously donated all 15 AEDs needed to replace our old ones. We are truly grateful for the partnership with this community. Thank you for helping us provide this essential, immediate medical assistance to ensure the safety and well-being of our students, visitors and staff.
Thank you for patiently waiting too, to get to this portion of the board meeting.
So, I just want to say that our partnership, oh, yeah, we'll, you can come forward if you'd like.
Yes.
So, please do come forward. I, you know, I don't say that jokingly. So, these AED units are literally life-saving units. And I think it just speaks volumes to the partnership that we have with you, that you would grant us the resources to bring in updated AED machines so that we can, you know, add to the safety of our campuses, both while we have kids during their typical school day, but we host a lot of community-based events. And so, this is also an investment in our community, and we can't thank you enough for your sponsorship for us to be able to update and bring in new AED machines, you know, throughout our district. So, thank you. And we'll stand and recognize and get a photo for your donation to the district. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, three, two, one.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Between the police chiefs that were in the building tonight and the AEDs, I'm not sure I've ever felt safer.
Very true.
Okay. Thanks for coming tonight. We will move on to our personnel items. So, the first item that is being requested of the board for approval is additional staffing for 23, 24, which includes a communication and administrative assistant support, which is a .5 employee of the district. And I believe Director Herman is able to speak to that this evening.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, Dr. Thomas, members of the board. Today, we're bringing forward a request to add a .5 administrative assistant position to the communications department to assist with the influx of public data requests and other ad hoc communication special projects throughout the year. We hope that this, this position will help us respond to the need, needs that are increasing and help respond to public data requests and redaction needs to ensure we're within compliance.
Thank you. Before we open it up, can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director Velazquez, a second. By Director Olsted. Thank you all. Any questions from the board? Just one question. Was there room in the budget for this position? Or was this, is this an add-on based on the information we received at the last study session?
Director Bullion, members of the board, this is within the approved budget. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
No, I just want to make a statement. So we, well, I fully support the need to increase our communication, and we've heard a cry from our community and both our teachers and our community from that and improving our communication. I'm hoping that that's what this position will help so that Christie can focus on improving communication with our teachers, our staff, our community. But I'm also really torn, knowing that now we face another challenge of safety in our building. So while I was fully supportive of this when we received it last Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever it was, I really have some mixed feelings. I would love to put this money towards some form of enhanced safety and security in our buildings.
Feedback from other directors?
I, you know, agree with portions of that. When I first saw it, I was disappointed that we have to add more staff for things, but that is what our job is in transparency and providing the public the information they request. I did question it, and then I remembered, somebody said at the study session, how much of our staff, also not just Christie, but the other staff gets pulled in. So I'm hopeful that this will help alleviate some of our other staff members, like Emily, getting pulled in. I mean, can you address that? Is this person really going to take some of the load off of additional staff?
Thank you, Director Burnick, members of the board. Yes, that is, that is the ultimate goal of this position, is to open up to Director Atkinson's point, Director Musman's ability to focus on safety, focus on security, focus on other communication tactics that she's heavily involved in in that area and all the other areas of communication. We're hoping this position will also be able to not only be the point person for organizing all the requests and responding to the redactions, but that one point of contact that can really be fully trained and versed in redactions to help reduce the load on others having to support those questions and those different needs. So that is our hope and our goal for this position is to help streamline and the efficiencies to allow other individuals to focus in on those roles and really dive deep into the other areas of need that we have throughout the district.
Thank you. All right, if there are no other questions, we can move ahead. All in favor of supporting this additional staffing?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes six one. The next item on our agenda is a memorandum of understanding, so Director Herman can elaborate on this. It's a superintendent PTO accrual mechanism, so an MOU change to the contract.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, member of the boards. I appreciate you allowing me to bring this to your attention. As we onboarded new payroll staff this last year, it came to our attention that one of our contracts had a completely different accrual mechanism than all of our other employee contracts, which is the exact opposite of what we've been trying to do in our district, streamlining our benefit packages, streamlining our operations so that we reduce workload. We also reduce the chance of errors that are occurring. In addition to that, as we've spoken to in the past, our HRAS does not have a lot of functionality to it. So the current accrual mechanism in the superintendent's contract is a manual process every payroll, on a monthly payroll, which really takes away from the payroll's ability to do something else. So we are asking for your approval to change how it is accrued, not making any adjustments to the amount of pay time off or the utilization restraints, but simply allowing us to utilize the same accrual mechanism that we use for all of our other employee groups to help streamline our efficiencies in HR and payroll.
Thanks for that clarification. Can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director Bullion and a second.
Second.
By Director Burnick. Questions or points of clarification?
I have one question, just thinking more farther down the road for the next contract. Is this something that we will look to adjust so that we don't have to worry about an additional MOU?
Thank you, Director Velazquez, members of the board. That would be my recommendation. This was not the accrual mechanism in the previous superintendent contract. I think it was just simply a, maybe a miss in communication between how human resources and payroll operates and the contract this year. So something that we can fix this time, and hopefully we can fix in the future contracts moving forward, so we don't have to deal with an MOU.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, all in favor of approval of this MOU?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero. We have no unfinished business. We do have new business. Before we go into that, we will start with the eight B. Is that what it is? Okay. Purchase orders exceeding 25,000. Can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director Burnick and a second.
Second.
By Director France, and I'll open it up for questions, comments.
Yeah, thank you. There was a concern brought to me today, actually, about the Brain Pop. And I just want to elaborate that my understanding is that Brain Pop is an app we use. It's a group of short animated educational videos for students K through 12. It's not used in all districts. While that sounds like a great resource, parents in our community have cited concerns with certain videos that teach subjects which go against their personal and/or religious beliefs. Examples of this are critical race theory or sexual orientation and gender identity. We experienced this example this past spring with a Brain Pop video that was shown in our middle school. It has also been cited that certain videos only share one perspective with students about numerously, numerous highly politically charged events in the U.S., such as Black Lives Matter. So I have a couple of questions for Dr. Edwards this evening. What percentage of teachers utilize this resource in our district and what grades are using it?
I'll answer the second question first. It is used across all grade levels, primarily, however, K-8, most notably, K-8. However, I don't want to say that it is not used at all at the 912 level. And as far as percentage of teachers using it, I don't have that specific data here tonight, but I certainly can provide that as an update. I do know that it's widely used by all content areas at the secondary level, specifically at the middle school level, and, which is one of the benefits, is there are videos specific to each content area, and it's certainly also used similarly at the elementary level as well.
Thank you. So this is a curriculum resource, and my understanding is that Brain Pop videos should be listed on Schoology for parents to access and view and opt out of the videos before they are shown. Can you confirm that if Brain Pop is utilized, that parents will have access to log in to view the videos before they're shown in class?
I cannot confirm at this point whether or not that is true, but what I can say is that teachers are expected to share specific information related to their content in their Schoology week at a glance that they provide via Schoology that parents have access to.
I think one thing that I'd like to also get clarified, clarification on, is how many logins does this fee cover? Specifically, this spring, I had requested a login as a board director and a parent, and I was told that there, we do not have enough licenses for all parents and board directors.
Yes, this login is a staff-based, teaching staff-based number of logins that we provide to our teaching staff.
So then, can you clarify how a parent would be able to access a video prior to being shown in a class?
So Dr. Edwards said he could not confirm that that was something that would be able to be done just a moment ago. That the, to your point and what we learned from the situation last spring, is that it's critically important and an expectation was stated from me to our principals and ultimately with our staff, any subject matter materials that are included in your lesson plan need to be made available, you know, to parents. Now, we don't have access, parents don't have access to a login for, you know, all the curricular resources that we have, but teachers need to give a context of what a video or a vignette or what a lesson is going to entail so that they understand the topics. And if they want to make a decision as a parent to say, you know what, that topic is not one I want my, you know, student exposed to, then that parent can make that decision and that arrangement in advance with the teacher. So I just wanted to give that context.
Yeah, so what would you suggest for a parent who would like to view a video? What's the process to be followed?
I would make a request that that parent talk to the teacher and make that request.
To go in and view the video?
To talk with that teacher and find out what protocols could be addressed so that I have a better understanding of said content, whether it's a video, whether it's a pamphlet, whether it's a book, whatever it might be. I don't want to relegate it to just a certain video.
Okay, thank you. And do we, as a district, put any restrictions on any of the Brain Pop videos shown in our district?
I'm not aware of any restrictions on any Brain Pop videos at this time.
Of the content. Thank you.
All right, any other questions from board directors?
I would just like to add one small last thing. You know, given our recent MCA scores, my understanding is Brain Pop is often used as a time filler, just speaking to several teachers in our district. And my request with the $27,349 for the renewal of Brain Pop would be, again, to take that money and put it towards safety and security in our building and have those students focus on reading, on some core academics versus renewing the license for the Brain Pop app, given the controversy that is surrounding this app itself and the fact that we're not able to offer, get logins or have logins for parents to access this.
I'll just add that we, you know, in the year that I was here, I can't speak to previous years, there's been one scenario where there's been a question with related, which related to the content of a Brain Pop video. I'm not aware of any other videos that have been brought to my attention, specifically citing that this video was shown, and I have concerns about that, and we never knew. So if that, again, we tried to rectify that by putting protocols into place for our administration and our staff to ensure that any core material, supplemental materials are published so that parents can have access and understand and ask questions about content so they can make some decisions as they see fit. A couple of items that you noted around using this resource or another resource in lieu of investing in safety, I just want to remind the board that our safety and security levy that will no longer be going to the SRO contract can be used for that specific purpose. And I mentioned that earlier as well, that I would encourage the board, as we look at that levy now that it's not paying for that contract, that's where we would supplement those resource, or supplant those resources to enhancing our security focus for training, et cetera. Private security, if we needed that, you know, until the remainder of the year. Just want to put that context out there, too.
Other feedback, questions?
I have a question. On the purchase orders exceeding 25,000, the four that are listed here, thank you, Director Atkinson, for the, you know, questioning on Brain Pop. I, too, have also received community feedback regarding Brain Pop, and I will say that it was based on that one particular Brain Pop. My question is, is when we approve these purchase orders, are we approving one at a time or is it all of them at once? And although I caution my own self in, you know, making a decision based on one negative feedback regarding something, I do think that there is, because it was multiple concerns, not just one of that, of that, you know, of Brain Pop. It was multiple people bringing multiple concerns regarding that one video. That's, and I guess what I'm saying is that if in, if approving these are a one, one approval, that's my question. Are we approving all of them or do we approve each one individually?
I believe we can pull out independently. I would, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to pull that particular item out separately for a vote.
Thank you.
If the board...
That would be my request.
I have a question for Dr. Edwards, if you don't mind. How long have we been using Brain Pop? I know it's been around since 1999, but can you tell me our district specifically? I hate to put you on the spot, but...
Yeah, I wish I could tell you specifically, but I know that it's been in existence for quite a number of years. I, I'm, if I was to give you a number, it would be a guess, but I believe it would certainly be more than five and possibly as many as 10.
Thank you. Okay, so we need to, we would need to rescind the motion to approve.
As a whole?
As in its entirety. Can I get a motion to rescind that motion?
So made.
By Director Bullion and a second.
Second.
By Director Atkinson. Okay. So we are looking to approve the first three listed in your packet, so clam mechanical, illuminate education, and another illuminate education as one slate. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So made.
By Director Atkinson, a second.
Second.
By Director Bullion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes seven zero. Can I get a motion to approve the Brain Pop portion of the purchase orders exceeding 25,000?
So made.
By Director Burnick. Can I get a second?
Second.
By Director Velazquez. All in favor?
Can we have a discussion, please?
Yes.
I just wanted to add one thing. I did check with some other districts, and not everybody uses Brain Pop. So are there other resources that we could look to, to, given the controversy of this resource, is there, are there other resources that you've come across that could be reviewed at curriculum committee? I'm just asking.
That's outside of our scope tonight.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But so tonight, we're talking about the approval of this particular item.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
That passes five two. Now, we will move on to addition, sorry, nope, we did that, I'm sorry. New business, 13A activity fee proposal. We have our athletic director, Marshall, here this evening to go over the request for board action.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Thomas, School Board Chair Crosby, and school board members. I am here with a proposal to increase our event worker stipends that would allow us to keep in line with other districts and would allow us to better pay our event workers for the work they do. In addition, it allows us to better recruit people from within the district to work these events, and probably more importantly, allow us to be able to retain our event workers for those pieces. If you take a look at the current event structure, currently, it's more or less a stipend pay for our typical workers. For zero to five hours, they receive $46. For five to seven hours, they receive $70. And for seven plus hours, they receive $90. And that's for our regular workers. We also then have site supervision or site management. Those are the ones who are overseeing those events at the time, which is why they get paid more. Currently, they get paid $60 for zero to five hours, $90 for five to seven hours, and $115 for seven plus hours. The proposed change would allow our workers, once again, to see an increase that's more in line with our neighboring districts and more in line for the work that they do. There's no piece out there that is under an hour. In fact, there's nothing really that's under two hours. On average, it's about two and a half hours. So when you look at the approximate hourly pay down below, it's using a two and a half hour time span for the zero, for the one to three hours, which would be $55, which is approximately $22 per hour. Three to six hours would be $85 for an average of about four hours each time. Very rarely do we have an event that's over six hours. If it is, it's about right at six hours, which would be $110. And then for our site management, one to three hours, we'd be looking at $70, three to six hours, $110. And anything that's over six hours would be $130. If you do look to see then as well, in terms of what the pay increase has been over the years, we have not had a pay increase for our event workers since 2009. So we're looking at almost 15 years ago where the last pay increase did occur, and that $46 is specific to the event workers for that piece. So again, this would help us better to be able to recruit and retain event workers. It's been very challenging to be able to do that. Again, it's mainly staff members within the district. There was a time where I think people really stepped up and did a lot of that, volunteered their time, and it's just a different world that we live in now, and we want to be able to, I think, accurately and be able to reflectively compensate them for the time that they're spending during that, during that, during our events, so.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director Atkinson and a second.
So made.
By Director Bullion. Questions, comments from the board?
I would just say, looking at PLA Y and what they pay their Umps to baseball, I was shocked by these rates that we only pay our people this much. So you have my full support because it's a way to recruit and keep good talent, so.
Thank you.
I just had one question. When we have volunteer people from different organizations, oftentimes they do it for, to earn money for their organizations. Have we done that with these particular positions? And if we have, is then the dollars donated back equal to the proposed pay or how does that work?
So typically, if we have any sort of volunteers, it's not so much from a supervision standpoint or working some of those pieces because there's some, you know, I think there's some concerns if they're supervising elementary age students or middle school students. So what we've done for any sort of volunteer work specific to events is usually like a cleanup after a football game or something like that. And really, it depends upon the numbers. It's a flat fee in terms of what they're given for their organization to come out and do something like that.
Okay, so in summary, this isn't, this isn't a one-to-one at all in any part? Good, thank you.
Right, yeah.
I had a question. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Are these mostly, like, a lot of community members that want to, that are doing these, a lot of these jobs or is it a lot of staff that are doing this on their own time?
It's staff members, yep. Most of it is staff members. It's obviously events that are at night and over the weekends. And so it's, it's a wide variety of teachers, administrative assistants, we get some par professionals to help out as well too, so. But they, virtually all of them are staff members.
It's, it seems like the right move. Thanks for bringing it forward. Do we have, and I apologize, I didn't get this question to you sooner because you may not know the answer, but do you have a rough idea on budgetary impact?
I do, it's approximately $7,500 to $8,000 annually.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
May I have one question?
Yeah.
Mr. Marshall. So with these, the proposed rate changes, $7,500 seems pretty low. Will we see a reciprocal change or inflation of the overall fees that parents or community members pay to cover the?
That's a great question. One of the pieces that I will say that there has been a slight increase in revenue is when we made the switch to online ticketing last year. When we went with Vanco, the ticket prices went up by a dollar at that point, so $8 for adults, $6 for students and senior citizens. We do still offer a cash option at our games and so by that increase of a dollar, that's directly going back to the district as some increased revenue. Additionally, the main reason why we went up by that dollar was so that we weren't charging the Vanco fees, the online ticketing fees directly back immediately to our users. So when you add up the expenses for that, it comes out to be about 75, 70 to 75 cents per ticket. So there's also even with the online ticketing piece, there's a little bit of extra revenue that's coming in. That being said, Director Velazquez, there is talk about the potential looking at next spring for the following school year, at looking at our fees and comparing what our fees are to neighboring school districts to make a determination if we need to increase our fees at that time. So at this point, we're not asking for a fee increase, but that is a piece that is something that we'll be looking at over the course of the school year.
Right, thank you. I would also add that while comparing to neighboring districts is great, we should also look at what does it actually cost to run the programs here and how much of that is supplemented versus outright borne by our community?
Sure.
Great. Thank you. Very fine tonight. I think we'll call it to a vote. All in favor of the activity fee proposal increase?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes seven zero. Thanks for being here tonight. Our next item on our agenda is the 2324 levy certification update. There is no board action, but Tammy, oh, sorry, Director Fredrickson will give us an update.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, Dr. Thomas, members of the board. The Minnesota Department of Education released the levy certification report for FY 2425 late Friday and then this morning they had a webinar to go over the report. We are looking at all 39 pages of the report and going through line by line to make sure that everything is as we expected it to be. I did give you all a handout before the meeting that just shows you what our proposed property tax levy is according to this MDE report. As I said, we're going through it line by line, so this is not final. There are, we've already found a couple minor changes that will affect the final report. But on, or September 25th at our board session, we are going to discuss this. So I wanted to give it to you tonight so you could kind of peruse it and see if there was any questions you had that we can talk about on the 25th. And then the 25th, we will need a board action to either pre-certify the max or we have to pre-certify some amount of the levy by September 30th to get into the Department of Education. We have until December after the truth and taxation hearing to make final changes. So the September 25th vote to pre-certify will just be preliminary. Again, we have ample time to go through and make any adjustments that we see that may be needed. But I did want to give this to you tonight just so you have a couple weeks to look at it and think of questions that we can talk about on September 25th study session.
Thank you. Director Fredrickson, I have a question. When we do pre-certify, if we don't certify at the max, can we still go up to the max or are there some rules that?
There is a rule, you can either pre-certify the max. If you pre-certify less, you can't go above what you pre-certify. So if you pre-certify the max, you can always reduce it in the final December report, but once you certify whatever amount you're going to certify, you can't go above that. So we'll always recommend certifying the max so that we can, if there's any changes, have that opportunity to look at it for the October and November before the final certification.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. We'll move on to the 2223 audit update. It's a report only, also coming to us via Director Fredrickson.
Thank you. We have been in contact with our auditor, MMKR. They are finalizing their management letter. We've asked them if it's at all possible to present the audit report on the September 25th study session. They will let me know this week if that's going to be possible. They're, like I say, they're trying to get the management letter finalized. We, because we're moving up the budget timeline, it would just be advantageous to us to have that final audit report done by the end of the month so that we can move on with preparing the 2425 budget according to the budget timeline that you've seen in the last couple board meetings. So because we are moving that up, we just want to get a final audit so that we know what we're working with for the 25, or 2425 budget.
Questions or comments from the board for discussion? Okay, thank you. The next item on our agenda is our annual resolution for Columbus Day Indigenous Peoples' Day. This resolution is passed annually so that school district business can be conducted on the second Monday in October. It is a roll call vote. Can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director France and a second?
Second.
By Director Velazquez. All, all, Martha, I have a que, do I need, should I read the resolution? Okay, everyone, it's in the board packet to be read. All in, any discussions or questions from the board? Yep. Any, okay, thank you. So we'll do a roll call. Director Atkinson?
Aye.
Director Velazquez?
Aye.
Director France?
Aye.
Director Burnick?
Aye.
Director Bullion?
Aye.
Director Olsted?
Aye.
Aye, that passes seven zero. Thanks, everyone. We are now on the superintendent evaluation process. So this process was presented at the board's study session on August 28th and board approval is on the table tonight. Before I open that up for discussion, can I get a motion to pass?
So made.
By Director Burnick and a second?
Second.
By Director France. I'll open this up for discussion and hand it off to you, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, board of directors. Just a real quick update, the framework hasn't changed. The only thing that we have done, working with Jenny's Ambush, with our district continuous improvement division, is put together a goal aligned to the domain that's set by MSBA and then gave examples of measurables that you could use to help frame your decisions on rankings. So that's the only thing that has changed. Other than that, it's ready for your approval or your vote.
Great. Questions or comments from board directors at this time?
The only comment that I would make is I really appreciate the new format, the alignment to MSBA and the emphasis on the objectives so that we are not trying to literally boil the ocean with this, but we have very prescriptive direction and objectives here to, to evaluate.
Any other comments from the board? I would just add that I appreciate Jenny's work on that, sorry.
Zambush, Director Zambush.
Director Zambush, thank you. If you're here this evening, I don't think she is. I appreciate the work you guys have put into this. I know it's been a lot of work to rebuild it and make the format in a way that isn't boiling the ocean, like you said, so I appreciate that. And examples are helpful, but certainly not limited to or, you know, they're there as an inclusion aspect. Echo those words. Okay, I guess I'm waiting for, no, it's okay. I'm, I'm not, we can wait for Director Velazquez to come back at this time. Any other questions? Any other questions from board members about the superintendent evaluation?
I have a question. I noticed that on the, and this is just for my clarification, there were measurables in the, the first part of the review and then the second and the final that was more general. Can you, I'm sorry if I missed this.
Yeah, no, sorry. Those would be applicable there to Director Atkinson. We just didn't cut and paste all the way down into the mid-year form, but that's the same throughout the whole entire year.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Yep. And a point, it's illustrative, it's not exhaustive. So there'll be various things that, you know, we may bring in throughout the year that are really critical and we say, yep, this is where, you know, we're going to go, so.
So at this time, barring any further questions from board members about the superintendent performance expectations and review, I think we're ready for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that passes seven zero. Our next item is proclamation for IT Professionals Appreciation Week. We have Director Technology Malazo here and no board action is requested, but Director France will read the proclamation for us.
IT Professionals Appreciation Week, September 18th through the 22nd, 2023. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools recognizes September 18th through the 22nd of 2023 as IT Professionals Appreciation Week. IT professionals play an integral role in ensuring the functionality, safety and security of technology in the 21st century classroom. This week, we celebrate our thanks and gratitude for these essential staff. Whereas Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has 14 DSC IT staff, whereas IT professionals manage over 14,000 devices in our district that students and staff depend on daily, including 9,000 iPads, 900 MacBooks, 1,600 desktops, 100 Apple TVs, 600 projectors, 1,070 telephones and 1,050 wireless access points. Whereas IT professionals manage and ensure the safety and security of our network, servers and infrastructure to follow practices that keep children safe online in education. Whereas IT professionals provide technical support to staff and students across our district, including but not limited to classroom audio visual, account setup and maintenance, mobile device and phone management and hardware software licensing. Whereas our district print shop professionals provide well-organized and efficient printing operations for the district by operating high-speed, high-capacity copiers, industrial cutters and other miscellaneous equipment along with organizing and processing materials at the curriculum repository. Therefore, let it be resolved, the Board of Education hereby extends its appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area School IT professionals for supporting the education of our students and staff and proclaims September 18th through the 22nd, 2023 to be IT Professionals Appreciation Week in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools.
Thank you. Chair Crosby, members of the board, Dr. Thomas, good evening. I'm Marcus Malazo, I'm the Director of Technology for Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. I have a brief statement, it's only one page, so I'll go quickly. On behalf of the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools Technology Department, I'm here tonight to express my heartfelt gratitude and appreciation to the school board for the proclamation of the IT Professional Appreciation Week within our school district. This recognition will continue to inspire and motivate our technology department to excel in their roles, to contribute and to continue advancement of our educational programs. My team is dedicated to supporting all stakeholders by providing top-tier technical support. They possess several traits that I feel are important to acknowledge. Now, this is not an entire list, but these are ones I want to highlight. They are responsive. They empathize with our stakeholders' technical issues and patiently guide them through resolution. They follow up and they're accountable. They are lifelong learners. They continue to look for ways to improve their processes, tools and skill sets. And maybe most importantly, they, I always say this, they have sharp minds and kind hearts. Kindness truly matters and when we're supporting all stakeholders, this is essential. I'm honored to lead and serve with this amazing team. I would like to once again extend my sincere appreciation to the school board for proclaiming IT Professional Appreciation Week. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you to your team.
Yes.
We have a date change worth noting. Due to conflicts in scheduling, the board's study session will be moved from Monday, October 23rd to Monday, October 30th. Still at the DSC, starting at 6:00 PM. So for anyone who's curious, that's the, that's the calendar change. We are moving on to policy and board policy approval. We are at the final step of approving Board Policy 203, which is our school board operating norms, and Board Policy 209, which is our code of ethics. We'll take them separately tonight. Can I get a motion to approve 203?
So made.
So made by Director Bullion, can I get a second?
Second.
So made by Director Olsted. I'll open it up for any, for each board member to speak and then we will call for a vote.
I appreciate the legal review on the language under How We Govern 5.1. I do like legal suggestion to change. They had provided two different suggestions, just to be clear, to change the language without ne-
To change the language without negatively impacting others, the language they suggested was while considering the potential impact on others. And I appreciate that, I think it adds clarity. We do know that people are sticklers for language, and I would support that language change. And then the second thing on that, there was one other thing. On 6.1.3.5, I noticed that I thought we had board, how do you say, board majority to remove the language of in order for the office of the superintendent or the chair to provide instruction, ensure arrangements are made to prevent a quorum, and that is still in the language.
Other board member concerns or comments?
Say again, what, 5.1? I'm sorry, my computer fell asleep. The language that legal recommended, or not recommended necessarily, but advised. Said it out loud.
Yeah, legal provided guidance on two different versions of language. 5.1 under How We Govern, the language in question, and that's being added to the policy, is without negatively impacting others. Legal's guidance was to change that to while considering the potential impact on others.
Director Herman, I know you spoke with legal on this. Do you have other feedback or additional feedback to consider?
Thank you, Chair Crosby and member of the board. I just would like to clarify that legal guidance did not find significant liability risk with how it's currently worded. It did state that if they're, while they do not see a strict legal need to revise the language, that the option could be to revise the language to say while considering the impact, potential impact on others or something similar to that. And that was the same conversation I had with her on the phone as well.
Thanks for that clarification. Other comments from board members? Is the will of the board to move forward with the language that's in the proposal now? I think we're fine with it. Okay, I'll call to a vote.
Chair Crosby, I'm sorry, Chair Crosby. I have something I'd like to add to the policy discussion. At the March 28th study session, Board Director France made the request to bring forth Policy 203, Board Operating Norms, even though this policy was reviewed and approved previously in November under our executive committee's France, Crosby, and Burnex leadership. We have spent countless hours, time and money on professional development, and even taxpayers' dollars on legal fees on the review of this policy. Just for the record, this is our sixth reading. With a new, with much of our school board director roles being defined by Minnesota state law, I have had a hard time understanding why the crest was even made to review this policy, except we do have a new board bringing new diverse perspectives and new ways and ideas of operating. With a new board and new leadership and the focus on trust and transparency, I have to ask myself, compared to where we were at with this policy back in March, do the changes made to this policy primarily recommended by our executive committee, do they increase trust and transparency with our fellow board members and our community or not? Was there value added to all the time and cost to taxpayers to review and make changes to these two policies? As I mentioned in our last study session, our 203 and 209 policies are unique to the fact that they do not follow MSBA policies, and they're a mixture of ethics and norms, and do not tie back to Minnesota and federal law. These have always been my primary concerns. It has also been brought to my attention by community members that we do not have a policy in place which allows our community to add an item to an agenda. In the hierarchy, we as school board directors report to our community. And when a concern is brought up, there should be a policy in place like MSBA Policy 206, which guides our community members on how to add an item to the agenda for discussion. While I'd like to believe that everyone has their fellow board members' best interest in mind when developing policy, my experience of serving on the board this past eight months has not been what I expected. I have received pushback from our executive committee, not only on this policy, but with the request to attend meetings, pushback from our chair when requesting information to support making important decisions which impact our budget. I have been requested to self-censor and have received written violations from our board chair in June, which was stated they were given to help guide a pattern of behavior. As I stated to the board chair, in response to these alleged violations, and asked her to share my comments with the rest of the board, which did not happen, I disagree with all the allegations made against me on June 22nd, 2023, and a request that they be retracted immediately in writing to me and to the public to be transparent with the community. I believe these allegations are a form of harassment with the intent to control how I serve in my role in the future, what information I request, and meetings I attend as a board director, and an attempt to get me removed from serving on committees. I believe that selective and retaliatory enforcement of board policies against me specifically is being pursued despite my First Amendment right to engage in the communication and activities addressed. I have a strong passion for our school district, our students, our teachers, and parents, and I am fully committed, regardless of the harassment, to serve in this role representing our community. I personally don't believe that the changes made to this policy by our executive committee really have the best interests of all board members. I believe that these policies do not increase trust and transparency, but in fact, create further division. I would like to rescind the motion to approve this policy this evening, and I'd like to make a motion to adopt MSBA Policies 203 and 209 in place of 203 and 209 this evening. MSBA policies are, not only are they examined carefully by their legal teams to ensure compliance with federal and Minnesota law, but the policies are organized and easy follow by both the school board and our community. Thank you.
Do I have a second to rescind and the motion proposed by Director Atkinson? Okay, that does not move forward. Any other comments from the board? All in favor of moving forward with Policy 203 as it reads in the board packet?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes six one. Moving on to Code of Ethics 209. Can I get a motion to approve?
So made.
By Director Olstead, can I get a second?
Second.
By Director France. I'll open it up to the board for any comments for each member to weigh in. All right, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of passing Policy 209 as it stands in the board packet?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That passes six one. We will move on to administrative reports, and we'll start with Dr. Thomas, Superintendent Report.
Thank you, Chair Crosby, Board Directors. Just a couple of things I want to highlight this week. First and foremost, we just, you know, welcomed our students back last week, and it's always great to have the energy of students back into our schools and the staff as well, and lots of smiling faces. And today, I was actually at preschool drop, and so you also balance smiling faces with tearful parents and things of that nature, dropping them off in schools for the first time. But just generally speaking, the launch was hugely successful, and I can't thank our community enough for a great start of the school year and look forward to, you know, a great year together. I will say that a couple of, a couple of changes that have taken place that I've been getting some emails about and feedback about, and I just want to speak to that tonight for our community. You know, we've changed the lunch schedule at the high school. And, you know, minus the first couple of days, there were, I think, some hiccups in getting used to it. I was there, I was also there for the entire duration today, also serving orange chicken, mind you. And, but also observing the time it takes to move through the lunch lines and the seating, and all the emails and the Facebook chatter that I'm hearing about. And I just want to let folks know, in every single lunch, there's ample seating. There's ample time. A lunch today, there were 17 minutes by the last time, the last rush of students to come through. I think the second lunch was 20 minutes, and the last lunch was 23 minutes. And from what I understand, our largest lunch size this year is still 100 short of our largest last year. So working a lot better, it's more smooth this week. And I just ask our community to, if you got questions, you know, make the questions directly to the schools, not to Facebook, because the answers are there. And I think people have kind of piled on to, you know, the rumor mill of kids aren't having time to eat and there are no places to sit. I can tell you, I have observed many tables of high schoolers, maybe 15 of them, all standing around a table for eight while there's vacant tables, you know, open. And so they want to kind of hang and congregate with their friends. There's plenty of spaces to sit. And so as we work through this new schedule, we'll continue to monitor that, but I want to assure the community of that. And I will also put a plug out. If you ever have the desire, I think I tweeted this out today, to work in a commercial-grade kitchen and serve hungry minds, any of our schools is a place to do it. But Prior Lake High School is definitely, definitely could use support. So it was a great time to connect with kids. And I'll just tell our students, the amount of please, thank yous, how are you, have a great day, the respect level of our students, I just need to give them props because they don't have to say that, but they do. And so that was really impressive to see. Speaking of seeing, I want to put out a very strong expectation for our students and a strong expectation for our community, and that is our dress code. We expect our students to come to school dressed to be professional, a professional learner, as if you were going into the professional workspace. And, you know, I think fashion these days could be debated, and I won't say that I could even win any remote debate about fashion. But what I can say is, we cannot see private body parts or private undergarments. I don't know how much more clear we could get. This is something that I want to make sure that we balance fashion with what's respectful. And I think showing of those undergarments and private parts is not a respectful thing to do. So our high school communities and our middle school communities, where you typically see some of these things taking place, please, families, again, I'm not telling you what to buy, where to buy, just, I need your support too, because they come to us this way. And then we have to figure out, how many gym shirts do we have to have people start swapping out clothes throughout the day so that we can get appropriate things that cover everything? So I can't stress enough, it's a two-way partnership, and we want to make sure, you know, through our policy and our handbook, that those two things are non-negotiables. And so we will have conversations as necessary with our students about that. I will also say that we are working this year in partnership with Live More, Screen Less at the middle school. And prior to the year starting, just seeing visual signs of changes of technology in how students and families will really, from a grassroots standpoint, help change, I think, the direction that we go with regards to student usage of technology and how we have more balanced approaches to that. So I will continue to update the board and the community as that transpires. So really looking forward to some of that. Also, I'll just share that the state of the district will be, is set for October 10th from 6:00 to 7:00 here at the DSC, like we did last year. Excuse me, and the promotions for that will start coming out this week. And lastly, I'll say, given the conversation and vote this evening with regards to SROs, we'll be putting together a comprehensive communication to our families and our community so that everyone understands what this vote means and our expectations and commitment to ongoing broad systems of school safety, of which our law enforcement are a critical partner in that. So those are the updates that I have, and I know we have a couple of administrative updates tonight as well.
Okay.
So I actually, do you mind if I just call a couple forward? Kind of in my flow, does that work? Okay, I think Jim might still be here. So we've had a big project at the middle school with capital improvement project with our pools, et ceteras, which kind of was a little bit of a Pandora's box. But we also had a partnership with the city to remake Fish Lake Road and adjusted some of our parking and things of that nature. And if you could just give an update on those two big projects and how that traffic flow is flowing.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Chair Crosby, School Board, Dr. Thomas. We did have a large project at Twin Oaks, we all saw it probably all summer long. It looked like a mess. We made some significant changes on our parking, our parking lots along with the city, really a collaborative effort with the city. And their engineers, our engineers, Marine Mullin, Matt Garrison, just really, the outcome is great, we pulled a lot of cars off Fish Point, which really, you know, really helpful. Excuse me. And then pool filtration was another one. As long as the buildings were down, we were able to get in and get that project done too. So a great summer for Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks.
Thank you.
And Jim, I just want to thank your team, because I know that summers are big workloads for your team, and they did a phenomenal job with the amount of projects that we had going this summer. So hopefully that they will now be able to exhale a little bit and be prepped for the next summer.
I know I will, I'm going to Canada tomorrow.
Yes, I know you are, so I figured you'd be home packing by now. So thank you, Jim, and to your team as well. We really appreciate you all.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks for staying and updating us as well.
Yeah, tonight, just kind of in the whole spirit of school safety, just want to have Dr. Edwards and Director Herman speak a little bit to our comprehensive all-staff training that we, modules that we've put together this past summer, knowing that some of these things would be coming down the pipe and the unknowns of special sessions. But again, SROs are just one layer. We have other conversations and training protocols, and they'll speak a little bit about this new approach that we took this previous onboarding or summer launch with our staff.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. Members of the board would like to give a huge shout out to the operations team, the health services, student support services, teaching and learning, really a whole department collaboration in partnership with our principals and our buildings. We created a pretty comprehensive slide deck and then did a train-the-trainer technique with our principals. And we spent a two-hour-long session, I believe it was, going over a really in-depth overview of our entire safety and security program that we have throughout the district with our principals, that then provided that opportunity for all staff before the school year started to hear about all of our different levels of safety and security throughout the district, from the district level down to the different departments and into the schools, and then provided them flow charts to know what to do in the event of a student crisis, who to contact. That training that I mentioned, that Dr. Chuka's team developed, would be available. So really did a deep dive into our entire ecosystem of safety throughout the district, if you will, to provide that update and training to all of our members. So I'll steal one of Director Delwo's comments. It was unprecedented that we were able to set aside that dedicated time for safety, health and safety updates to our, all of our staff. And I think we heard some really great feedback that it was very much appreciated in partnership with investments that the board approved with the additional deans, social workers, psychologists, cultural liaisons, all of these additional adults in the building, they're going to help build those relationships, help address any behavior issues that do occur. But like our police departments said earlier today, it's really about building those partnerships to prevent any of the bad behaviors from happening. And a lot of that was shared out that we were really, really happy for. I'd also like to just add on with the back to school, a big shout out to all of our hiring managers, principals, and the human resources department. This was unprecedented. This was an unprecedented number of new hires this year, and we are in a significantly better space than we were last year with the number of openings we have throughout the district and significantly better than some of our neighboring districts. So, we are still hiring though. Noon supervisors, parent educators, child nutrition, please join our team.
Just one last piece I'll add to the safety component too. You know, specifically tied to the deans, you know, even working with some of our contractors, specifically speaking, our bus drivers, we are going to be working in collaboration with our bus company and putting together our own training protocols for bus drivers in our district as well. And so, it goes beyond just the classroom. Anybody who's coming in, touching the lives of our students, those are the folks that we want to make sure that they are building those relationships so that they know how to engage, as well as, should something happen, here are the techniques that we would recommend that you can use, you know, on the bus. We had a meeting with the bus company and all of our deans just last week that Dan, Dr. Edwards facilitated. And I'll tell you, the feedback from the bus company is like, this was extremely helpful to have that personal connection, to have that personal training, putting, you know, working with Christine and her team to put together, you know, a training video for the bus drivers to include them as actors, if you will, so that they see themselves, that this is what it means when you're driving for PLSAS. So, just a big shout out to our bus company and their willingness to partner on that preventative safety measures with us too. Last one is Dr. Edwards, an update from you as well.
Yeah, so if I could piggyback on some of those comments, thank you, Dr. Thomas, members of the board. Wanted to share just a little bit more on the specific to the dean situation there. Dr. Thomas alluded to the meeting with the bus drivers. And I've heard from multiple principals that the appreciation for the investment this week, as I, last week and this week, as I've been in buildings, seeing the difference already, four days in, that a full-time dean at each of our elementaries and one full-time at each of our middle schools is already paying dividends and will continue to pay dividends. And I look forward to us continuing to develop those relationships as additional ways to meet all of those needs of our students. And so, just wanted to emphasize that point. And then finally, I wanted to share a couple of, just an update with regard to the upcoming celebration of Constitution Day/week with some updates from each of our respective levels regarding that. So, just in talking with our elementary principals about what experiences they will be having in their schools, actually, this aligns quite well with the kickoff of the school year. And this is something that they have been doing for a number of years through the responsive classroom, in which each classroom sets up their own constitution. And so, they utilize this as an opportunity to talk about the importance of the constitution on a school-wide basis, but then break it down to the classroom level, specifically reviewing the constitution, as I have in quotes here, as they implement the aspects of their responsive classroom, having the students even including signing their names to that respective constitution that guides their work. And then subsequently, throughout the year as well, where appropriate, specific to the social studies at each grade level, tying in aspects of the constitution also. Similarly, at the middle school, during the week of September 18, so the day, Constitution Day being the 17th, each building throughout, in that week will be incorporating additional information. They have a weekly pledge of allegiance that they lead across the building, over the microphone, over the P.A. system. And during the weekly pledge, they will be acknowledging the importance and significance of the constitution, as well as additional curricular context, once again, that come up throughout the school year within our social studies courses. And finally, our high school will be planning an announcement and acknowledgement on Friday, September 15, specific to the importance and significance, once again, of the constitution and its impact on us as citizens of the United States. And certainly, as it relates to the high school, I do know that in many of our, actually all of our social studies classrooms, this is a key element of conversation, particularly with our seniors as they are preparing to go out and have the right to vote. And talking about the specific aspects of the constitution and how that impacts their lives as students, both within our school and the broader world and community that they will enter as adults.
Was it all the reports?
Great, thank you for those updates. They're all really informative. Board reports.
I just have a small update in regard to the Teaching and Learning Advisory Committee. Our first meeting is October 9 at 4:00 p.m. Jessica and I both serve on that committee, and we added two additional members to that committee. Shannon Bixby-Pankritz and Jean Wheeler will be joining us on that committee. They were alternates, and I believe they've both been informed that they will be joining us on that committee. And that committee is now well-balanced between community members, parents, and administrators. So thank you, Dr. Edwards, and Director Alstead for working on that. Thank you.
Other board directors with any updates?
We had our first policy committee meeting. I was actually really impressed by the engagement, comments, and knowledge and professionalism of all the members at the policy, our first policy committee meeting. We had no policies to present to the board because they were very thorough. And the second reading of the policies, based upon recommendations, will be coming forward in the next policy committee meeting. And I had the date in here and I lost it. Emily, do you know what it is, Director Herman? Yeah, I believe it's, I think it's October. Is our next one? Yeah. I think it's the first week of October, actually, the first Thursday. But don't quote me on that, I know it's on the calendar.
October 12.
Okay, October 12, okay. And then also, I've always been heavily involved with MinCaps. And next week, they sent out a message saying that they were requesting help and still need volunteers of professional H.R., health people, and tradespeople to help in the students' first practice interviews. And this is the very first time, there's not a lot of prep for it. For anyone who has ever been involved with MinCaps in this particular process, it's really a tremendous experience to see our students come alive and talk about their hopes, their dreams, what they want to do in these mock interviews. It really, really is a feel-good time. So, I know they have a first thing in the morning and also the afternoon session. So if you care to, please go to the MinCaps site and volunteer.
Thank you. Any other board reports?
I'll just take an opportunity to report back about our board development that happened at the end of July, which was facilitated by Studer. And, you know, it was open to the public. But some outcomes of that for our board were for us to focus on two standards, the first being conduct and ethics. And this was also part of a board's self-evaluation process. So, the first being conduct and ethics. So continuing to do board development leadership work with Studer as it coincides and relates to other work that Studer's doing in our district that could potentially include, you know, if we went down that path, strategy work. And also, under conduct and ethics, to note state statute in our policies as applicable, because as we discussed, policy is rooted in law. The second standard that we were focusing on for this next year is advocacy and communication. So, that's really like Studer's training with us was really powerful to reinforce our commitment to utilize and focus on a positive language of leadership as a team and managing up as board directors. So we hope to emulate that as we move forward in our work, just like we're seeing in the leaders in our district. Also, another measure of advocacy and community engagement is around realizing the outcomes, we hope and certainly expect, with the increase of community engagement and representation on our committees and memberships. And then, as a board, supporting and engaging in our outreach, community outreach events that will be going on this year. That at that time, we talked about directing PLSAS's profile of a graduate and the work that's being done with that. And again, that could potentially link to any strategy refresh work that we would possibly do. So that was just kind of, I felt the need to circle back with the community on that, even though we're leaning into September now. And we did have an AMSD meeting this week, and it was mostly all that's out there for board directors to see via email. The presentation was really solid on kind of demographics and Morris Leatherman's work in the state, surveying and understanding kind of the future and direction of our schools and public support. So, want to add to that?
The only thing I would add is that there's a lot of interest very early already around legislative agendas. So respective MSBAs, AMSD, I anticipate this is going to be a more aggressive approach to taking on some non-funding pieces. So I think it'll be really important for us to spend some time thinking about that earlier than we maybe typically have, given what we are seeing with the legislature. I'll just leave it at that.
Great. Thank you. Future events include, no more board director updates, I don't want to.
Sorry, I had one more to add. The Equity and Inclusion Advisory Committee is looking for applicants. So if anybody is interested in serving on that committee, applications are accepted through September 29. So if anybody's interested, that would be a great place to serve and put your equity hard at work. So, just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. So, future events, Fall Community Fest is September 18 at the high school at 6:00 p.m. Our board study session is September 25, 6:00 p.m. here. Laker Hall of Fame Celebration, the intro at Dan Page Stadium, happens 6:30 p.m. before the homecoming football game on Friday, the 29th, with an awards dinner at Legends Golf Club, September 30 at 6:30. Tickets would be purchased in advance. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So made.
By Director Bullion, and a second?
Second.
By Director Burnick, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes 7-0, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.